Hello, everyone. We are reconvened from closed session. The board took no action during closed session. Welcome to those of you joining us in person today. This is our first meeting back with our mask policy changed to optional masking. The board meetings are now open to public participation in person and also online. I know we have several attendees. We will continue to have the online option for those of you that prefer to move the meeting from home. We'll start tonight with our pledge of allegiance. Tonight's student leader is Theodore Vang from Sam Davie. Principal Isaac writes that Theodore Vang is a wonderful young person and a great representative of Sam Davie Elementary School. He is a creative student who loves to do art and enjoys making others laugh. Most recently, Theodore performed as the lead character in our fourth grade class play. He is a hard worker and a kind friend to the other students in his class. Theodore is very involved in Boy Scouts and he really enjoys helping others. Theodore, thank you for being with us tonight. If you'd like to come forward to lead the pledge, those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Now move on to the adoption of tonight's agenda. I would hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Move.
Move in second. And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed. Right. Well, now move on to our recognitions. And I will turn that over as always to Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Nordean, board members, student representatives, and executive team and guests. We have one tonight. We do not have a person here able to accept the certificate, but nonetheless, the Black Student Union needs to be recognized this evening from North High School. The Black Student Union, or the BSU, is open to all Eau Clairemore students regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, or sexual orientation. They meet in the Student Success Center every other week to discuss relevant topics, cultural history, upcoming events, fundraising opportunities, volunteering, as well as ideas on improving their learning environment. BSU strives to provide students of color the opportunity to help educate their student body on African-American culture, all while still learning more about their own culture. BSU welcomes all members from all backgrounds. Their goal is not only to create a welcoming environment for all students, but to improve the overall experience for African-American students at Eau Clairemore High School. Black Student Union is led by advisors Isaiah Watkins, Amber Schrader, Jean Smith, and Carly Sagerz. During the month of February, BSU is hosting multiple events to celebrate Black History Month. This includes our first annual Black History Month trivia. Students have created trivia questions to be read aloud to all students to assist in spreading knowledge on the African-American culture. BSU will also host its first ever Taste of Our Culture Dinner. Students will serve traditional soul food dishes for dinner while also showing a Black History themed movie. Once again, the recognition for this evening is the Black Student Union at North High School.
Our next agenda item is our public forum. Tonight, we do not have any members of the public signed up for comments, and so we'll move directly on to our regular reports. We'll start, as always, with the Budget Development Committee and Commissioner Lyons.
Budget Development did meet on the 17th of the month. We had been talking about consultant and hiring a survey consultant, help us solicit public opinion. We are looking at a partnership with the city in doing that collectively. And this meeting really focused on our upcoming forums that we're going to be collecting information, not only from the staff within the district, but also the larger community. And those dates will be given to the full board, but tentatively, we are looking at two dates in March that would be virtual. We talked quite a bit about virtual versus in-person, and we will be having one of these open forums in-person. So two virtual and two in-person. We're talking a little bit about the logistics, having some breakout sessions attached to the virtual presentations, and I think we're moving along quite well.
Thank you. Thank you. Move next to our legislative remarks on. Who's Dr. Johnson?
February 21st to 25th is Public Schools Week. Public Schools Week is an annual event celebrating the amazing things that happen every day in our public schools and sharing our appreciation for our educators and the value of a great public education. On February 15th, the State Senate passed two A-12 related bills along party lines. Senate Bill 448 requires a statement included in the referendum question must also provide the estimated amount of the interest accruing on the amount of the bonds along with the interest rate. The Wisconsin Association of School Board opposes this bill. Rates change and placing a rate on the ballot would essentially be a guessing game in the final rates, which may be a year or more later, and the vote will almost always not match what was put on the ballot. Assembly Bill 495 allows possession of a firearm in a vehicle on school grounds by a person with a license to carry a concealed weapon. The Wisconsin Association of School Board also opposes this bill. Our resolutions are very clear that we do not support the ability of anyone who is not a law enforcement officer in possessing a firearm on school grounds.
Thank you. Thank you. Now move on to our consent agendas. For each consent agenda, the board considers approval of all items on the consent agenda with one vote without discussion. Board members have discussed these items at a previous meeting or have been provided background material. Superintendent's consent agenda is first tonight. Items on the superintendent's consent agenda include Human Resources Employment Report, Financial Report, January 2022, bids in the amount of $3,865.92 for the period of January 1st, 2022 through January 31st, 2022, payment of all bills in the amount of $4,812,581.7 and net payroll in the amount of $3,844,161.30 for the period of January 1st, 2022 through January 31st, 2022, and five-year capital project bids. I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Would you please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean.
Yes.
Commissioner Zer.
Yes.
Commissioner Bika.
Yes.
Now move on to the board's consent agenda. The board's consent agenda includes minutes of closed session, February 7th, 2022, minutes of board meeting, February 7th, 2022, and minutes of board work session, February 14th, 2022. I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda. Move. Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed. Thank you. I will now move on to matters reserved for board action. We have one item tonight, and that is the ECASD 2020-2021 Audit Review. We'll call on Abby Johnson and our auditors to...
So tonight, we asked April Anderson from our audit firm, Of Clifton Larson Allen, to share for the board the results of our 2021 audit. So April, I turned it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. So as Abby pointed out, I am here to present the 2020-21 Audit Report for the school district. And there is a big full audit report that you should have received, and it has a lot of useful information in it. It is very lengthy, though, and so what we do pull out is the executive audit summary that I'll go over with you. And this is what we feel are the key pieces of information for you to know as the board and the governing body of the district. And so I will start off with just the overall audit results here. And so your audit report did receive an unmodified audit opinion, and that is the audit, the highest audit opinion that you can receive. That's obviously what you're striving to receive. It means it's a clean opinion in that your financials are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and all the governmental accounting standards that you have to follow as a governmental entity. And so that is key to the information that is in your audit report, and that's saying a lot about your staff that you do have here, the financial information together, and doing the processing of the transactions and pulling your financial statements together and all of that activity that goes into it behind the scenes before the report is presented. As we do go through the audit, not only do we look at the financial piece of it, but due to the state and federal funding that you receive, the grants and aids, we also do have to look at compliance pieces of that, and if you comply with certain requirements on those aids and federal requirements. And so the third paragraph here does go over that, and we didn't have any specific items to note there. So no findings, weaknesses, or control issues noted. On the financial statements overall, we also did not report any deficiencies otherwise or any material weaknesses either. The last item on this page, then, is one item that did not come to the level of being reported as a significant deficiency or a material weakness, but we did want to just bring it to your attention, in that in one of the programs that we do have to test, there is a specific test of the licenses of the individuals that are being coded to that program. And so we just wanted to identify here that some, the state did identify some people that weren't maybe properly licensed at the time when they pulled their report together. And so the district has to go through the process of kind of some additional administrative work to provide the information to the state, to DPI, to show that the people are truly properly licensed. So we just recommend putting a better process in place to make sure upfront all of that activity is well documented and appropriately available for DPI to know that everybody's appropriately licensed. So then, these are the key high-level results of the audit. We will, the next few pages are just items that we are required to communicate to you as far as estimates that go into the financial statements and other things, but we'll go a few pages down to get into some of the actual financial results, then. And so here on this page, we are looking at your general fund, your main operating for the district on ten. And we show a four-year comparison here, so you can see how things have changed over the last couple of years. And the first part here is your balance sheet. And so you set with your assets and your liabilities, less your liabilities, and you get to what is considered your fund balance. So a lot of the changes that you might see from year to year in your assets and liabilities are just usually timing of things at year end. And so it may be state aids coming in prior to year end versus after year end. And so what we are going to focus on in this part is really that fund balance part. As I said, the assets, less your liabilities. And in that fund balance, that is considered your reserves, or what you truly have available as a district. And so in that section, you'll see that your fund balance ended up increasing about $5 million from last year. And so that's a positive result as far as your revenues exceeded your expenditures in 2021. And that is due to multiple factors as far as a lot of expenditures did come in under budget, and then there was some additional revenues that brought you in over budget on the revenue side, some additional funding that was available, and then just on the expenditure side, some decreases in some of the expenditures that you were seeing there. So what we do look at, though, in that fund balance section, is there's different parts of fund balance. So you'll see that there's 3.2 million that's considered non-spendable. And so we kind of take that out of the overall fund balance because that's sitting in your assets and that cash has already been used. It's not really available for you to spend, or it's not available to you. So then, we look at the assigned fund balance, which is a part of fund balance that already kind of has a purpose set aside for what it's to be used for, and that relates to your self-insurance, your self-insurance dental, and that those funds have been provided at this point in time for that program, and so they're set aside for that particular purpose to be used in the future. So then you get to that remaining fund balance, the unassigned fund balance, the highlighted number, and you'll see that you're at $36 million at the end of 2021. And so what we look at there as a benchmark to say, what does that mean? What does that $36 million mean? We compare that to your annual expenditures. And so that's what you'll see at the bottom of this page, is the percentage of that unassigned fund balance to your annual expenditures. And you'll see that that's at 29.2%. And so the district does not necessarily have a fund balance policy of where you want this to be, but our general recommendation is to have that level about 25 to 33%. So you fall right within that range that we recommend and you kind of expect. And so what that means is that you have enough funds available to provide for those unknowns that might occur. And so you would be able to, you know, take on something that might happen, an additional expenditure that you might have that you weren't necessarily budgeting for or expecting to begin with. And generally, the benchmark that we do see with, we work with many, many school districts in Wisconsin, and we do see it about 27 to 30% right in that range, too. And in the last couple of years, the trend has been for, it has gone up a couple of percentage points just due to the environment that we're in with some expenditures maybe declining compared to what was budgeted initially. So you're following right within that trend and in that range that we would like to see. On the next page, then, we can take a look at the rest of your funds, everything else but the general fund where most of your operations occur. And here, you'll just see the ending fund balance for each of these funds, and I won't go over every single item here, but just wanted to point out that the other major fund that you report is the debt service fund, and so that is obviously where you set aside your debt levy to pay for your principal and interest each year. And in 2021, you were able to make all your interest payments and principal payments. The principal was about 4.7 million on debt that you made in '21, and then interest payments was about $1.92 million for your debt. And then the only other fund that really has changed much over the last few years is really that capital projects fund, which is common because that's where you issue the debt and then you spend it down for those particular capital purposes that you want to use it for. So that is all of your funds and operations and activities for the district. The last thing that we like to pull out as kind of a key indicator is what your long-term obligations and your long-term debt are. And so here in item number three, you'll see that the general obligation debt has gone down over the last few years because you issued debt previously, and now you've been paying that down. And one thing that we look at here is that every school district, municipality, county, and in the state has a debt limit, and for a school district, it's 10% of the equalized value within the district. And so you'll see there, the bottom section here, is that the district is utilizing about 5.5% of its overall debt limit. And so that's at a really good level. The average in with the districts that we do work with in Wisconsin is about 20%, and obviously that can range, some with very major projects might go up to about 60, 70%, and others have no debt. But at the 5.5%, you're at a very good level there of your debt utilization. And then the other items that we have here for long-term obligations for the district, the non-general obligation debt is lease liabilities. And so in the last couple of years, you have gone that road to finance some purchases of technology, computers, and that sort of thing. And so that's just another financing mechanism there that you've utilized. And then the other long-term liabilities under that is related to what your employees have earned at this point in time for the work that they've done and for what will be paid out into the future. So there you see vested employee benefits, which is sick vacation type leave that's accrued, and so no major changes with that really over the last four years. And then you have your other post-employment benefit, retirement benefits, and your pension benefits there that are the district's particular plans and what the estimated liability is there to be paid into the future for what your employees have earned. And then the last couple of items there are your participation in state plans. You also have to report those items in your financial statements. And the WRS one looks uniquely odd there because WRS is fully funded, and so you actually have an asset that you show on your financial statements, and so that's why it's zero for the last couple of years because it's been fully funded. And then the very last one is your participation in the state life insurance, retiree life insurance. And so that is your allocation of what that fund and that participation estimate is at. So as I said, these are what we feel are the key pieces of information for you to have a good understanding of the results for the year. I know we have left it open for questions if you want.
Thank you. It's always good to hear the unqualified at each year. Are there comments or questions? It's good to know that our fund balance reserves are right in that sweet spot at 25 to 33%.
Yeah, that's, I mean, there's not a one size fits all, but that's the general recommendation, yes.
Is there a level at which you would flag it for concern as an auditor?
Well, I would say there are some in the districts that we work with in Wisconsin. There are some that fall closer to the 20% range or so, but that's really a level that they're comfortable with, and it stays at that level continually. It's when it would start going down and continually go down where, you know, it would be of concern at that point in time. But, you know, if that's kind of the point where they're at and it's comfortable and they're able to function and provide the services that they need to and want to, you know.
Thank you. Dr. Bika?
Just want to say that the audit report, it's always a high point of the year. I really look forward to it, and it's been exceptional. And so thank you to Abby and to Abby and crew for another great year. It's incredible.
Am I missing the excitement part that Commissioner Johnson just talked about?
So I... Your money report is boring? That's exciting. We're doing it all right. The numbers are where they should be, at least as far as the accounting goes. We can talk about the overall, yeah, the improving in terms of the fund balance. We can talk about the overall funding state, and we can go on for a long time about that. But just the unqualified audit is the best you can do. So no other comments? We do need a motion to approve the 2020-21 Audit Review. So move. And a discussion on the motion. Say if you would call a roll call vote.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Thank you once again.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
This time, we'll move on to monitoring our district results. We have one item tonight, that is our first draft of our three lifelong personal development and growth, by Superintendent Johnson and some of the executive staff.
Thank you. For this, for our three, and like I said, from the board members, a little later this afternoon, since it's an R, I made the mistake of putting compliant down rather than progress toward it, and that's, you know, an OE versus R, mistake on my part. Just first, first of all, like Dr. Nordean had said, we talked with executive staff and other staff here at the district level. We think it's critical for students, and the board values the ability of our students to set personal goals for the future and identify the steps to reach the goals, to recognize all sorts of connections between their current learning and future goals. And I know the board values that ability for students to understand and manage their emotions, identify and utilize resources in times of need, especially over the last couple of years, and feel and show empathy for others and demonstrate self-control. That passion for lifelong learning is also critical in developing those life skills to enhance and determine their future courses of action or direction based on their interest and their learning preference and their current academic achievement. The second component of the summary or my interpretation was citing a quote, but ultimately, you know, we do glean some of this information from surveys, and we've had surveys shared. Michelle Ratkey is key in that with student climate, can do so with family engagement and such, but, you know, skills related to communication, collaboration, time and goal management, among other things, they are elements that are taught to our students by our school staff. Now, is it universal? We would have to say no. And that's why in some of the indicators, you'll note that, you know, gaining that baseline data in my discussions with many of our executive staff and district leadership here at 500 Main and even out in the schools a bit, they recognize that. They are very, you know, these choices are difficult to measure and quantify, but we do have, you know, some evidence of informed choices like extracurricular participation, survey tools, attendance data that's shown, I believe, in 3.6 later on. Students who are engaged in informed decision-making, they attend school at high rates, another data point would be our attendance as well. So we need to monitor that, but as it says later in the, I guess, later in the interpretation, you know, to ensure that focus on equity, athletic activity participation data will be reported by the following subgroups, and I have those listed. The same would hold true for attendance as well. So I do have some definitions there. I held off on, there's only one where we have some acronyms with academic and career plans, but actually, you know, it's fewer definitions, there are fewer definitions than we've had in some of the OE fives or OEs lately. But when it comes down to it, you know, sharing with 3.1, you know, students identifying and pursuing their personal goals and ensuring they do so, A-12, those that come to mind with those indicators. For 3.2, you know, understanding and demonstrating habits and choices, once again, we talk about the universal activities and assessment tools at all levels, not just presented, but are they assessed? And do the students, do students truly understand them? And that's where I had for indicator two on 3.2, as well as later on, we've got to collect that baseline data because once I communicate with others, I realize that that's not in place. There may be some things that we are not making progress. For 3.3, employing strategies to effectively deal with adversity, conflict, and change, again, very similar to 3.2, universal activities and assessment tools, and collecting that baseline data. So for 3.4, for 3.4 and for 3.5, somewhat similar with demonstrating resilience, resourcefulness, collaboration, and self-actualization, and then the intellectual curiosity and interest in lifelong learning. Again, we've got to find out, you know, we have these universal, once again, they must be universal activities, not just, well, one of the middle schools accomplished this as opposed to, no, all three of them do, and here's how we can prove that. And then going to 3.6, developing practical life skills, including but not limited to problem-solving, time management, organization, and self-sufficiency. And we've got a couple items listed there, and actually, talking with Jim Schmidt about it a little bit and talking with others to, with portion of a graduate learner profile or redefining readiness, could some of these, where it's stated in the indicators for one and two on 3.6, could that be used as evidence for other indicators for previously? Yes, it could, but I wanted to have that discussion tonight to be able to share. Quite frankly, I am not, you know, for work that Jim and others have done, Mandy, Ka'een, Michelle, Lisa, you know, and principals and staff members, you know, I'm not able to speak to that as well as they could, and what's the progress on that right now? You know, I'm not able to speak to that as well as they could and what's the progress on that right now. For example, talking about DPI was redefining readiness. I was involved in, I believe, Michelle and Jim, maybe two of the workshops and just very briefly. And talking with another, actually an urban superintendent. And I just asked the question, how often are you on here? And he said, that's my first one. Then he said, he didn't have the time, but he said it's important for his district to participate in this for a variety of reasons. But it's really, it's good to get that help from DPI. So anyway, I just wanted to leave it at that. The third and fourth indicators for three point six, we've seen them in, I believe, in R two where we talk about student attendance. We're going to monitor that and then break it down demographically and and our co-curricular and extracurricular participation as well to have that increase per year. So with that, I'll be taking plenty of had a good conversation with a couple of board members, wanted to share that a little bit. But also take comments, questions. I'll probably run directed questions to others and I hope that's okay. But also taking your direction to deliver that then for the evidence when we come back for this for the for the final.
It's Superintendent Johnson. Comments and questions from board members who are student representatives. Commissioner Zer and then we'll go to Dr. Johnson after that.
I just have a question and then I'll just follow up. So I guess the question I had for for Superintendent Johnson and I'm wondering what are, I'm wondering what those specifically, I mean, redefining ready has has the the career readiness indicators and the college readiness indicators. And life readiness is supposed to be a part of that, but they haven't developed it yet. So it's not, it's in development. So none of the districts who are in redefining ready have those indicators yet, which I think would go a long way to helping us monitor those these things. So I'm wondering, wondering where are we at in developing areas for the other two categories? Or are we waiting until we get the life readiness indicators? Because I think that's, that might be fine to do the work all at once. And or is portion of a graduate going to be duplicative? Is it going to be, is redefining ready going to be a duplication of that learner profile already?
That's actually, that's where I'd hand off to either Jim or Michelle or whomever. I know we've all kind of talked about this briefly and I know your engagement in it.
That helps, right? So the short answer is they are not duplicative. I'll let Michelle, you want to talk about the redefining ready and then I'll talk about.
Many of the things that are in that life ready area are more abstract things that I look at. You know, that comes with like our ACP because it's self-awareness, it's growth mindset. It's things that you have a hard time measuring. And it's so our our students being exposed to those things, are they showing those critical attributes? So we really, you know, we have had in the past, like at our elementary schools, our behaviors of lifelong learners. But those we need to, we're starting to reevaluate those and look at what does that mean for those and how do we change those? So we're doing some work around that to get to that point. But I think at a national level, they have left those very abstract because they are hard things to measure. So I don't think you're going to see any of those life-ready skills. I mean, they have a list of what you should be looking for, but they don't say what is or, you know, how do you measure that? So.
Guys are defining those yourself?
We will, we will have to define those ourselves. Yep. And I think a lot of the work that we're already dealing with through ACD, that that will help.
So the learner profile work is actually categorized in about five different sections, like authentic individual, global contributor, those type of terms. And really look at the progression of skills we want to build with students over the course of their careers of this. And then you can talk about the redefining ready is really the product or outcome of the work and really those defining metrics as students leave us. So one of the things that some districts have called the learner profile, a portrait of a graduate, which it really does lead towards that that piece that Michelle has been leading. They use the term learner profile because that work has to start at a really young age. The hard part of this is it's a thing that's really hard to put your finger on. They were trying to actually articulate in terms of a rumor that shows like, what does it look like when you are a novice versus an expert and try to grow that student over time. Part of that work also has to still be, you know, that's part of the ongoing work. So a bunch of it was done over the summer and into the fall. There's been a little bit of a gap due to not being able to access staff that has to pick that work up. And those, these pieces will complement one another, like that piece of learner profile will lead into the redefining ready. Eventually, and then you'll have a continuum of both indicators and then the metrics that help us progress or monitor how the progress of how our students are doing in terms of meeting them. It's a big project.
Yeah, that sounds great. So if I could just follow up, so I just think when I looked through this, there were just a few things that that spoke to me. I think the first thing was the part I really liked, and I think this is a compliment, is the universality. Where that word, you know, universal or all. Think what I, what I see anyway in like working in this field is sometimes these types of activities are pulled out and put in a special class that kids take. Or, you know, it's like an elective or it's something, you know, where students get sort of pegged in a certain category and go, they take these, you know, certain series of courses. And so what I, what I'm really, I think what I will be looking for is that that proof of universality, like where, how are all of our kids? So, you know, if you've got a kid of two doctors and no offense to anyone in the doctor category, but the, if you got, you know, students of, of, you know, two medical doctor or a student who, you know, ends up going into welding, where, where along the continuum is that student exposed to all things so that that goal can be articulated within themselves? And I think on that, and I kind of saw it maybe perhaps in, it could be indicator three with three point one or perhaps in three point two, I think family engagement is is big in this realm because I think that that is, I mean, we see that a lot in in success metrics in this, you know, kind of nebulous area of ACP. Right? Is how, where are we engaging families? How, where are they a part of that conversation and we're educating them on the opportunities for young people? So, you know, if there's, if there's individual conference planning documents or something like that, that can be really beneficial. Like where are we engaging families and making sure, so we see that drop off, right? At high school of parental involvement and conferences. And rather than just using that conference time, you know, for academics, I'm wondering where are we having those conversations about rules and student being able to kind of establish that with a counselor and the family all at once? So I think that's something that I would love to see somewhere in there. And then in three point four, the only thing I thought was if, and I think this is really valuable. Resourcefulness, collaboration, where are we doing that both internally and externally? Where are we doing that? Where are our students doing that in the community? Where are they practicing those skills outside the walls of their of their school building? And I think that, you know, we could see something like that. Because it's one thing to do it in an environment you're comfortable with. It's another thing to see it. You know, it's something to be well-rounded enough to exercise it outside the walls of the building. So, yeah, and then I think really my big question is just how do we measure this, right? So I think that that, that, you know, DPI is really wanting that life readiness SEL framework to be part of ACP. And, you know, in this like bit with redefining ready of like, oh, define it yourself. It seems unfair, but like, you know, is DPI going to do that? I hope they do. I hope they give us some. But like the, you know, how are we going to define some of these things? And it's fine if we're maybe not making progress because we actually just don't have definitions yet of like how we're measuring that. But I think, I think that that's a question that I have, right? I think all the districts are going to wrestle with that, right? How do we actually define this and measure it?
Thank you. Doctor Johnson?
Yeah, the, the challenge for me as I, you know, I looked at this document is, you know, I'm, I'm really having difficulty looking at what the artifacts or the indicators will and, you know, I, I, I think if we start, if we start going through, through some of these indicators. So for, you know, three two on down where the indicator two is baseline data is collected is the underlying, the underlying assumption is that based on undetermined or already determined components from indicator one, we will present baseline data from those universal activities and assessment in indicator two. And the presenting of any type of information result in year one, is that the reasonable progress piece? I'm, I'm just, so I, this is, this is, this is a little bit, a little bit challenging for me to, if I, I really can't see see artifacts, maybe they're out there because when you go three two, three three, the same thing about this universe, there, there are universal activities. So I'm making the underlying assumption that our, our district has identified these two. We'd be able to, and there's able to collect tangible artifacts to present baseline data and this baseline data to be judged as the reasonable for each of these is identifying and or further operationalizing the definitions that Commissioner Zer talked about and identifying tools, is that the reasonable progress in year one? You know, I'm, 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 I'm uncertain. The, the, the thing you doubt, could you, could someone just elaborate on? Is indicator three and indicator four under three six? So what's, why ninety five percent does, is there, is there data that supports that says at ninety five percent attendance for individual students will see some, some level of improvement? I, you know, I, and I, I guess I'm not sure what would reasonable progress be reported. So if we look at our data, do we have the data that, what's, what's our typical attendance of our, our particular students? And obviously I would caution about using previous, especially the last two years at least. But I'm, I'm just, where, where is it ninety five percent? So if you were to come back and provide us, if it's, if it's at seventy percent, are you making the argument that seventy eight percent is reasonable progress towards ninety five percent? And I guess for me, you, you, we indicate that we will look at specifically, look at certain particular subgroups. But realizing there's so many things that go into, that go into attendance and, and, yeah, I, I, I'm not sure. Does it need to even be there or if you already have an idea that? And then I, the indicator four for me, the number of students participating in a co-curricular. So I, I will be under the assumption in the artifact, instead of those students to participate in multiple co-curricular, extracurricular activity that we'll be looking at individualized students participating in, in both of those. Are you going to include data from both? Because for me, if we, if we include just students who participate, I'm pretty sure that we can find certain characteristics of certain students who do participate in co-curricular multiple. But there are some who are left out of participating in all. What I'm interested in is the individuals, the individual students, that are those students who potentially participate in multiple. Unless there's characteristics of those students who participated in multiple or two that would be able to tell us something that we could utilize to get. So, so this is, this has been, I, I didn't think it was going to be that much of a challenge, but I, I guess without seeing kind of an, an idea of like the artifacts. And I guess once the artifacts come, would be a good opportunity to then bring back the concern and address whether or not if, if, if something, if I think other artifacts should be inserted and some taken out. But that was, that, that's what I thought was really the, the challenge. That was an unbelievable long comment. My apologies. Was it necessarily a question? But the, I guess, I take that back, the last point about indicator three and four, because I would assume we, we, we have some of that already, correct?
Correct.
You want to take the ninety five percent?
I, I can take maybe a couple of those questions that were in there. I think I can answer maybe three. The first one, the ninety five percent comes from a state lead. And so they say ninety five percent state attendance is when students will be most successful. And that is how our state report card is the gauge that they use. So ninety five percent and up, you're on track. If you're at ninety to ninety four point nine nine percent, you're like on watch. We're in the yellow. And if you're below that ninety percent, we're in the red. So, and that's when you want to pay particular attention to those students that are in that red.
And this tied to academic achievement?
Yes. Yep. And in particular, one of the things that we know that comes through the redefining ready statistics is one that we really want to start looking closely at is ninth grade attendance and making sure that those ninth graders are at ninety five percent. And just, they say that the research that has been done is that the course attendance in ninth grade or freshman is eight times more predictive of success than their eighth grade test scores. So we're starting to track that more to look at those kids, who are they? And doing some work with our counselors to, to keep those kids on track. So I think that answers that one. And then the co-curricular, extracurricular, it's unique. So we want to pay particular attention that students do have at least one co-curricular or extracurricular activity a year. Not just once throughout their high school career, but once every year that they're participating in something. And that is more likely, those students that are engaged in those activities are more likely to pursue higher education of some sort. It's from the, the national research that has been.
Because there's some exciting research, especially if, if we provide extracurricular activities to students with disabilities at the secondary level, success in terms of vocational participation.
Yes.
Independent living. You know, I, I, I saw it as a subgroup and I guess for me it'd be very important that that, that we're able to have that. And, and, and so it's, it's really in not, the research is not extracurricular activities specifically for at least some of the disabilities, but extracurricular that have been inclusive in nature that ensure that level of social, appropriate social engagement, students with them without disabilities. So that, that, that's nice to hear there.
Guess what I'd like to, what I'd like to add and thank you, Michelle, for doing so. And actually, John, ninety five percent question, saw that in a variety of other districts' data. For example, Sun Prairies, Racines. So I asked, well, what would it be for us? Well, ninety five percent because of the reasons that Michelle had, had asked or had shared with you. Going back to the original or to the first part of what Dr. Johnson had brought up about, you know, it's very challenging to do this work. It's very, you know, very uncertain arbitrary at times because certain definitions, you know, in, in the lack of universality as well. I just got to tell you that with the data that I've looked at from other districts and when they're doing their monitoring reports, there's basically nothing from nineteen twenty and twenty twenty one or very little because of the impact of COVID. And as, as Jim Schmidt alluded to, and as all of us know, because we've all been in classrooms, whether it's November, December or January, we don't have the people to do this. We simply don't. And I talked to colleagues around the state, doesn't matter if it's a small district or a large district. We don't have the ability to do this. Our staff are gassed and I, I would imagine they'll be gassed in June too. But we can't do this work right now. And in order for us to make this happen, it's got to be together. And like Jim had talked about with learner profiles, bringing people in. That's the way we get, you know, we get an accurate depiction of what Oakley School District, families, students, staff believe that go into that profile. We just can't. And I have no problem seeing that from October on. We haven't been able to do many things, but like trying to get creative as we can. But simply that's, it's a lack of staff power to be able to do this, to collaborate. Now, will we be planning for the summer to be able to do that? Yes. Are we going to see some things on this, on R three that we are not making? We're not making reasonable progress? Yeah, absolutely. But, you know, part of my job is to, okay, then when will we see this? When will we have progress made? But I think we can only do that when we do it. Um, but I think we can only do that when we do it together. Uh, so ultimately, you know, that's that's kind of the response I have to that first part. Um, I think our our staff would agree. Um, and I I know that our administrators would agree too, we're just having to do some things between October and. And the present where we haven't had to do that before. But in in the work that I've been part of and that I've listened to and and talked with others, it's exciting work, and I've said this before, just with general curriculum work. In September where people are excited about the work, like this was great to get together, but we haven't had the ability to do so in quite some time. Let me excuse just an explanation.
Hi, Lance. Um, thank you Superintendent Johnson and it's not. Eclair is is in the same kind of situation as every other district as well. And as I was thinking and listening to Commissioner Johnson. Uh, and talking about how the pandemic has impacted personal growth and development. You know, it is in those extracurricular activities and and I'm wondering, because I know that we um. We we do measure student engagement. And I would think that personal growth. And development would be also connected to um. Forward progress in student engagement and that connection that students have with um with. With the district and within their school, and I don't know if there's um. If perhaps that might be an artifact that would fit into this. But if we start to see students really engaged um. In their school, I would think that that would be. A result of having multiple um opportunities. Uh, for uh extracurricular activity for. A whole number of things that really connect the student with the classroom and with others. Thank you.
So a kind of a small point, uh. On R three, it's R three point four. One of the terms there is self-actualization. I do admit this kind of slipped through, I guess, that I I didn't notice, but this is uh self-actualization is really a. Disciplinary jargon, you know, that's made its way into the common. It's kind of common language, I guess. And I think if you could find a way to measure self-actualization, uh, you know, you, you know. But e- uh even if you could, developmentally, uh, you know, five to eighteen year olds don't have it. Um, and so I'm I actually, as small as this is, I'd actually be interested in making a motion to replace that word. With a term that you can actually assess. And so something that, you know, from the document for Erica, self-awareness. Self-management, um, what is it that you are interested in assessing the self, because I I don't think it's self-actualization.
So Dr. Wega, are you making a motion or do you want to have that? We can be, you know, we just had our work session on policy and I I think this is, you know, we could easily slot that into an individual item. At the next meeting so that we got we're not um hearing about something and voting on it like in one session, is that is that a possibility?
Tonight so that when you're coming up with the evidence or the artifacts, that you're not going out searching for something that measures self-actualization.
Or I could shift the indicator to say three of the four above.
Well, if you.
We still need if the if the wording is not what the board intends, then we still need the correct wording and if we're measuring something that's not appropriate, then we need to.
So I guess my question is, do you do you want to measure something about the self because it could be deleted? Or just replaced with a term that educators actually do assess? And I whatever your guidance is on what that term is.
So are you making a motion?
Well, I'd like to know what the replacement term would be, if it's a deletion or it's a replacement. So in the in the measure in the tools that you use, what is being measured about the self? I don't know the answer to that.
No, do I? I would have to go to Dr. Shong for that.
Um, so if I may add, I think that the um probably terminology is important here because self-awareness is an essential competency. That D B I has put out, so we have specific lessons and activities that. Discuss and talk about self-awareness, so I don't think that would be a wrong move perhaps. Really saying specifically what it means that we will be measuring in our age, but truly a self-awareness as that is a. A T P I competency that we use and work through like our purposeful people and teacher strong lessons as well as in many of our N C P lessons that. We have sequenced for particularly our secondary schools.
And I would make a motion to replace self-actualization with self-awareness.
Second. Discussion on the motion. So I don't think I have a problem in uh in principle with making this change. Dr. Shong, thank you, that's a that's a good explanation of why self-awareness might be a better term to put in there and might make it easier for the the district to show. I am hesitant to vote on a change to our overall governing policy. Rapidly as just on a. When we haven't had time, when I haven't had time to consider what the ramifications are or the. Um, the impact of it, I think on its face, my reaction is I think it's a good change. But I'd like a little bit more time to consider it. Uh, so what I will do is I will move to table this motion until the March seventh meeting. I would let I mean, obviously, that would need a second in and of itself. If you're ready, then we'll return to the motion at hand, any other discussion on the motion. Doctor Johnson.
So, you know, I I I. I would just, you know, um. Uh, just make the 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 remainder of the commi- uh commissioner's just aware in terms of, you know, as. As 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 we do this, uh, that, uh, you know, moving fo- moving forward that, uh. Uh, the precedent will be will be set that it 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 is possible. Um, that uh as existing and already previously voted on policies come forth that. We're 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 making the the conscious decision to potentially uh adjust. Not uh uh. Align with realization as it as it's presented to us and so just be conscientious uh uh. All that, that that's that that's going to be a precedent that's that that's set here.
Right, so and I'll note that um. You see two, our governing commitment, sub point seven says, the board may by majority vote. Uh, my by majority vote, let me try again. The board by majority vote may revise or amend its policies at any time, it certainly is called out specifically as something that is within our power to do. I don't, I don't personally feel that this is it's critical to amend it at in the moment. Right now, and we can, we can have this be a part of the the assessment, knowing that we're going to have a chance to talk about it, make this change and have some time to reflect on it. So I, you know, I I didn't get a second on tabling, so I will vote against. Changing it right now, but on the idea that I would just like us to have some time to consider it rather than voting on it immediately. Their discussion on the motion.
Commissioner Clements.
Um, I agree with what. But I think the spirit of your motion is in terms of should we be changing a policy without being on our agenda and all and all these things. Um, I think it's a matter of practice, we should avoid doing that. Um, however, I think replacing one word with. Another that we think is appropriate for the intent of of this policy and I have. I have no concern about that. In and of itself, so I have I have some concerns about whether we make a vote on. Changing a policy without it being on a notice agenda, but. We'll see where this goes.
It's 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 within the it's within the period or the parameters, but that is set, so it's just. Move forward, we just have to be conscientious.
My objection is not necessarily, is it a better word? My objection is to, I don't, I don't think this is a like the process that we want to do if we don't have a kind of sensitive requirement. We're doing it. I envision me voting yes for it on the seventh, but I I want to, if we put something out there, I want to have time to consider it. Especially when it, this is, this is the fundamental thing that we do in our governance is uh monitor and work with our policies. Similar to discussion, I'll call the question for clarity. So I don't have to try to listen to a voice vote and figure it out, I would like to do it by roll call, please, Terry.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardine?
No.
Commissioner Zur?
No.
Commissioner Vika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Uh, the motion passes, so the policy is amended to read self act self-realization, self-awareness, excuse me. As opposed to self-actualization, and so you can make that change to the indicators and interpretations for the upcoming final policy review. Other discussion or. Commentary on R three. If you're none, thank you Superintendent Johnson, thank you, Michelle, thank you, Jim, uh, Dr. Zhang as well. Um, we'll move on in our agenda then tonight, we have a board development item, this deals with our upcoming referendum. That is the A T S R facilities study, I can see Abby already coming forward to present, so I will turn it over to you, Abby.
Thank you. Do you have the presentation?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we wanted to present um kind of an update where we are with the facility studies. And um one of the things that we had seen, I think Phil, maybe you gave this to us. Um, from a referendum presentation that was attended in Milwaukee. Was kind of looking at that big picture and we've kind of been talking about it, so we thought it would be helpful to. You know, bring it as we're having this discussion, so. Um, ideally, you would have a master plan that's updated every five years. Um, we've had the five-year capital plan, we haven't had this formal study. You know, and that goal would be to be every ten years and kind of make sure that you're keeping your five-year plan up to date. So that's really at the top is what does that master plan look like? And then from that master plan, you determine what's your immediate needs, what's your emerging needs and your future needs. So your immediate needs are really those things that need to be done in the next year, probably. Emerging is maybe within the next five and then future would be more five to ten. And then you want to break it up into what's part of your um capital improvement plan, you know, that spans in the next five to ten years. Or is you, are you looking at referendum to help solve what those problems are and the needs? So when we went through the um A T S R facility study, we've been talking about that for a little while and so um. A T S R met with every building principal and even some staff at the buildings to help determine what are the needs. Educationally and facility-wise, they also talked with buildings and grounds and food and nutrition to help. Again, what what is the full encompassing of the. Items that are needed for the buildings and the facilities. So you can see here, we have a list by school of what the facility needs are, and this is strictly functionality. Of the needs and for elementary and Prairie Ridge as well, they identified about forty four point eight million dollars. Um, for us. Related to elementary, when they looked at um secondary, um again, kind of all of those needs for from all from now until the next ten years. Looking at that, what do we have for middle school needs for facility and that was seventy nine point eight million. Um, then they looked at what are other facilities does the district have, so we have this building and we have the service center. There was about three point three million um identified in facility needs for those as well. When we put that all together, um, the kind of initial estimate for needs just for facilities. Um, in the next ten years is about one hundred and twenty seven point nine million and you can kind of see priority one is like in that next year. About five point two million, priority two, like in that next five years is about eighty seven million and then priority three, you know, kind of in that five to ten years is more of thirty five million. Um, and then the breakdown that we just talked about, the forty four, the seventy nine and the three point three. And so how does that information impacts the referendum, what do we do with that? And so I wanted to bring it back to what recommendations has the board currently received related to facilities? So on your um plate, you have a proposal from Demo and Trans regarding Meadowview and Putnam Heights. And then obviously a recommendation for North High School. So I as a friendly reminder, um, the recommendation for elementary, you know, the first and um. Desired piece from Demo and Trans was really looking at additions to Meadowview and Putnam Heights. Um, the estimated cost that you were provided was about nine point three million and that would add three hundred and ten seats. Now, our nine point three million dollars is just specifically for classroom space. If you look previously in the screens I just showed, that was a very different number, um, looking at the architects and engineering. Um, again, our proposals were specific to to classroom space and here's how much it would cost to add a classroom, it wasn't looking at. Boilers and HVAC and some of those other facility needs, um, it was strictly just getting additional space. The second recommendation, which was, um, you know, another option for elementary was just looking at at Putnam Heights. And again, when we looked at that, um, that was about two point two million for the classrooms and that would add about a hundred and fifty seats for elementary students. If we break it down individually into the buildings, um, I have a few pictures from the facility study, uh, this is the kind of the. Global view of Meadowview Elementary and what its current footprint looks like. Um, you can see the playground is here in the back and then, um, you know, the drop off and pickup in the front and that red. Spot is the entrance to the school currently. When um A T S R looked at it, they had made some recommendations um of some things that could be done. To kind of meet those goals based upon the conversations that they had. So the gray was the existing um area of the school and blue is additions, you can kind of see the numbers one. And two are new classrooms and a new cafeteria, one of the things that I um that we learned in the facility study and talking about. Um, that of you specifically is their cafeteria is right next to the gym and sometimes there's not. A real great serving space and so because it's all kind of together, so one of the things that would help the building function better. Would be to be have that intentional space and to have a new cafeteria area. Um, number three is looking at new hard surface because with number four, the new parking and drop off, that would take some of the space. And so looking at how could that be added um in that area so that way then we're not losing all of that green space. If we want to look at Putnam Heights. Um, one of the questions that we received after we brought this to budget development was how much? How much of the area do we own and how much of the forest, so um the red line is um the we kind of the boundaries for the district property and so this is the current footprint of. Putnam Heights. And so then again, when we talked with um A T S R as well, um, looking at where would you put that additional space and. Um, what's existing already and so the recommendation would be to put the addition kind of on the back corner. Um, some of you might remember that when the remodel was done in twenty eleven with that referendum. That it was intentional to keep those buildings that were remodeled to be able to expand easily in the future if needed. And so I believe that this was the um plan and why this. Picture was real easy for them to draw because it was already set up to um have the addition there. Then let's look at North High School and remind you of the recommendation that. Um, was brought before you and that was really option C. And that was to add um nine classrooms, which would provide seats for two hundred and seventy more students. And the price take that we estimated was just under six million dollars for that. And then there was an addition that we would need to talk about the cafeteria expansion for about another million dollars because if we have. Space for more students and we know we have more students, we need to make those common areas larger as well. So when I look at North's footprint, um, you know, if you're familiar with the building, that's why we have. So when I look at North's footprint, you know, if you're familiar with the building, that's why we have the, the red dot right there, that's the entryway into North High School. And here's a picture of some proposed, what could be done, and so the gray is existing, and then the blue would be some additions as well to that, to help with that functional facility for that education piece. Then a school that we didn't, you didn't have a formal recommendation on was South Middle School, but you probably remember that we've been talking about that school for a while as well. So South Middle School was built in 1970, it needs a similar upgrade that was completed at DeLonge in 2011. I remember in 2016 when we were talking about the referendum, South was a big piece of the conversation, and it was removed from the 2016 referendum because the price tag was gonna make it so large that would consume too much of the referendum, and we wanted to get deferred maintenance kind of caught up to date, and then look at that operational piece as well. And so that's why South Middle School was removed from that referendum, and it was discussed at that point in time in 2021, when we have a debt drop-off, it's 10 years after DeLonge was updated. The law, our South was 10 years newer, and it was kind of a natural time to really be looking at South Middle School. So when we look at the footprint, this is the existing footprint of South Middle School. Then they gave us some additions as well, and so there's some proposals to add on to the blue areas are the South additions, and then gray, now South is a little bit harder to tell the additions, because there's two levels. So there's additions on both levels, which isn't represented here, but it's in the same areas, and that's why you see the blue. So when we looked at the preliminary cost estimates for these four buildings, you can see that the ECSD estimates are very different than what the ATS R estimates are. And that really comes down again to what I said before, is the ECSD estimates were specifically for space, and then they include some of the other work that would need to be done. And so when we first saw this, we're like, wow, there's a really big difference, what did we miss? Then it's when we started digging into the details, we realized ours was very much focused on, this is just a classroom addition, and not thinking about the rest of the things that would need to be done with the building. Meadowview in the, in the proposal would gain six classrooms in common areas. Putnam would also gain six classrooms, North would be the classrooms and cafeteria. And then in additions, the other piece that's different between the ECSD estimates and the ATS R is that in ATS R, ATS R's numbers, North has 106,000 square foot addition, Meadowview has a 42,000 square foot addition, Putnam Heights has almost 13,000 square feet of additions, and South has a $55,000, a $55,000 square foot addition, I'm getting my dollars and my square feet mixed up, I'm sorry about that. And so those, again, we didn't, in ours, it was just simply the classroom space, and so the square footage even in the ECSD estimates was much less than what the architects proposed. And so that really leads us into the conversation about capacity. And how does that impact the decision that you need to make about what are we gonna go to referendum for? So Demo and Trends and Kim and her team shared this information, we shared it with them last week, and kind of looked at, you know, where are the schools that we need to be very concerned about? And I know that we've seen this and you've seen this before, we always really start to watch schools and put them in the red once they get into that, you know, over 90% capacity. And so you can see in 2019, our actual numbers prior to the pandemic, Meadowview was a school that we knew we needed to do something with, as well as Putnam Heights. Well, if we look at the projections that we have, you can see that Meadowview is different now. And then Putnam has pretty much remained the same, and so that would be something that you would have to consider. Do you only look at an addition for Putnam, or do you still look at an addition for Meadowview? I think the concern would be for Meadowview, we know that there's growth happening to the south of town. And so by putting an addition on Meadowview, that would help for future if there needs to be any boundary changes, because that would provide some additional seats on the south side of town for students. So just something that you'll wanna think about, they look good now, but as we start to get back to more normal, are we gonna see some students come back? Because that's a piece too of why our numbers had gone down as far as capacity goes. Then of course, North High School, you know, we were up there at 88, 88.7%, and now you can see our projections for next year puts it at 98%. A lot of that, we talked about, the boundary change really did, what it was designed to do was to get enrollment between 100 students, and the projections for next year are 114 students different between the two, so that piece was accomplished, but the space wasn't designed. So we had 1,900 capacity at Memorial and 1,700 capacity at North, so then that's really why you see the difference, and why the recommendation came forward as needing to put an addition on to North High School. So the other thing I wanted to review with the board tonight was really our timeline for the referendum for November of 2022. So the green is things that we are currently in process of. I think Commissioner Lyons shared a little bit about this during our budget development update. And so we do have a survey, a request for a proposal out right now to identify a vendor to complete a community survey for us. And we anticipate that will be returned to us on March 11th. And then last week, I met with the architects and the engineers and our team as well to kind of look at these numbers that were provided from ATS R. Some of the things that they identified are things that are part of our normal year capital maintenance, or some of it might just be ongoing things that we do every year. And so trying to pull out those pieces that are normally part of a capital improvement plan or just ongoing maintenance to help say, what does that number really look like for the work that we need to get done? We also talked with them about a couple of additional options, like I talked, we talked specifically about South. Do we need a 56,000 square foot addition for South Middle School? If we look at our population for South Middle School, you know, we're 80, we were at 80% and we're projected to be at 70%. I don't know that we need an addition at South Middle School, and so again, what other options can you give us? We know that it needs a major overhaul, but do we need to add space for students as well? So that was a, that was a question, and I asked them to go back and look at, you know, how would the numbers be different if we didn't have that addition on there? So we started that process, and we expect some additional options, and then basically, again, continue to work on refining what those estimates look like. And we will need direction from the board as well. Do you wanna look at all four of these buildings, or is there ones you wanna specific target? Four, we haven't identified a specific dollar amount yet either, so again, being able to have some options to react to or reflect on will help us as well make a good decision on what we should go to referendum for. In the month of February, working towards some school board planning sessions, and then some community listening sessions. And I know Commissioner Lyons, again, you alluded to some of that a little bit earlier tonight, because we talked about that a lot at budget development last week. And then really in February and March, just keeping this on your radar, that we need to continue this discussion of referendum needs. Really, I think we've got a solid handle on what our facility needs are, but then how does that play into operations, and what do we need to do and what should be considered as far as operations? We probably do need a couple of board work sessions to really have those conversations and make sure that we know and identify, you know, which facilities, what operations piece, and just make sure that we're all on the same page, so that we then, as we're getting numbers and, you know, trying to start determining what type of question and dollar amounts that we're all on the same page for the information we wanted to get. So Mike and I worked on this last week, and this is what we presented to budget development. Last week is having two sets, two dates for community listening ser, sessions. Oh my goodness, it's been a really long day, I'm sorry. So having two, two dates with two, two virtual listening sessions, and we would limit it to 100 people per meeting, and we would ask people to pre-register, because we really want to be able to use breakout groups and be able to have a meaningful conversation to gain some information. So we did talk about this at budget development, and maybe we'll revise it a little bit, because one of the things that was suggested is, could we put together a presentation that they, people could watch first, and then be able to register afterwards, so that we then they already had some background information? And then that would give us a little bit more time to explain breakout groups, and then be able to have more conversation about identifying what those needs are. Our, our original thought was to have a 15-minute presentation, a five-minute discussion on breakout groups, because we don't know if all of our community members, you know, wanting to provide input have had a breakout group virtually before. So we wanted to make sure that they kind of understood how that would work, and then allow some time for conversation and then wrap up. And then again, we would look to have an additional in-person the week of March 28th to help gather and solicit as much community feedback as we could get. Then we talked about staff listening sessions, and Mike and I had the same philosophy, that we would host an ensemble video, and it would be shared with each district building, and then we would request specific feedback from those buildings, so that way then we could gather that and share it with the board as well. So next steps that we would ask for tonight would be to get it on the radar, to schedule some board referendum work sessions, really focusing on prioritizing the district facility needs. You know, we've got the immediate needs, the emerging needs, and then the future needs, and then that operational component as well. So with that, what questions do you have for me, and what discussion would you like to have?
Thank you Abby, time to questions? For Johnson?
Yeah, you know, I would, I would like, as we were given the facility study and Abby, what would we particularly consider, I, I would keep in, keep in mind, I think there was, it was intentional that South was on the radar 10 years ago, and it's essential now, given it may not be a space issue, but overall, facility upgrades that have moved from low priority to potentially are now immediate. And so I, you know, I, I think in our discussion, in our conversation, not only the space along the teeth, but also the kindliness of how where priorities lie, and I, I, I think that the conversation has to, has to include, and, and, you know, it's, it's one of those things, as we consider some of this, providing the overall picture was a hope that our community realizes that it's going to take additional investment. When our school district, from the facility standpoint, and, you know, as a discussion in an operational standpoint as well. But I just like to keep that in mind, I know, you know, we pay attention to the protection of numbers, however, to me, after making it through, I think I'm on page 389, I'm almost there, so I think it's 547, I bookmarked it, I'm on 389. It is just really interesting how the priority levels by building, where some, we're really on the brink of some, we, we probably should be addressing like priorities in multiple buildings besides the four that were considered, considered this evening. And so the longer we kind of put those off, the more, more need they become. And the facility itself also impacts the learning experience of our students, and so keeping that in mind, thank you.
Commissioner Lyons?
Abby, I just wanna get my arms around some of these priority numbers and make sure that in my head, I, I, I have that, that scale correctly, if you could go to slide six.
Is that the emerging, this one?
That's the one. So that priority one, hi, these are architects, that $5 million number, the architects are telling us that those, that those projects probably should have been done last year, that there's almost an immediate need to focus on, on that $5 million.
Within the next year, so in a very short timeframe.
Right, that priority two, the medium, is that it needs to be done in, in the very foreseeable future? It's, it's in a one to three or a one to five timeline?
Five.
One to five. And then the low are things that probably need to be done in what timeframe?
Five to 10.
Five to 10 years, okay. So if we took the, the primary, we need to do this within the next five years. Five million need to be done right away, and 87 million need to be done within five years. And that's just the deferred maintenance, we haven't even touched the Demo Trends recommendations, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Now, two things I'd like to just add to the, the priorities one and number two. So we have addressed some of the 5.2 in the five-year capital plan, so you approved a couple bits tonight, and you approved a couple in two board meetings ago, so that number has changed as well. The other piece that is in there, we have architects and engineers that are looking at items, and they're at the end of their lifespan. So let's take a boiler, for example. There, I know for sure that there's a boiler that is slated to be replaced in there, because it's 30 years old. Boiler is working great, we are able to service it, and we've been able to maintain it, so it's in there because of the life expectancy. And so my team is actually going through now and saying, yep, this needs to be in the, you know, a medium priority, or nope, we think that this is actually more of a low priority, because here's what we know about our equipment. So some of the things that are in, some of the things in the, in the numbers, our team is looking at as well, because we have our own plumber, we have our own electrician, we have our own HVAC crew, and so they are really refining that number to say, yes, this really does need to be replaced in the next five years, or that's more of a five to 10-year need. Because, and again, they, they wouldn't have that experience, and that's why it's important to have that collaborative notion. So they're still working through, what does that look like? But from the architect and engineer's numbers, if, if something's at the end of their life expectancy, then based upon that life expectancy, it's also included in those numbers as well.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Abby, can you bring up the list of like which schools are pretty likely to go up and down in enrollment?
Yes. Sorry, this one? Josh?
Do we have any, do you have a slide on projections that are further out than next year?
Not as part of this presentation, we do have it, I just didn't include it.
So one thing I wanna ask a question about is prediction on North. One of those, the, the reason, the one reason that I think that, although it doesn't quite add up to Memorial, but, you know, I spent a lot of time on Demo and Trends before, well, not a lot, I spent a few years on Demo and Trends before moving to the board. And we talked a lot about the fact that the current eighth grade, you probably only remember because I have a current eighth grader, is a bubble class. They're a uniquely large class compared to the others around them. That was the Great Recession, there wasn't a lot to do, and so there was a lot of 2007, 2007 babies born. I wonder, you know, when we talk about North and adding on to North, the reason they're gonna gain so many is because all the eighth graders now are gonna be ninth grade next year. And so my, I think, you know, it would be great to add on to North, and I get a revamp, get some of those breakout rooms, that probably just even right now need a, without the bubble class, needed a bigger cafeteria. My question is, you know, is, is that bubble gonna pass in four years, and then we're gonna see the same thing that we see at all three middle schools, which is when that eighth grade leaves, they're really backed down on a much more manageable level, and is that, I wonder if that's, that one is the best, the $67 million that ATS R says for North. You know, when we talk about South, it needs that revamp, it needs that facilities without, and potentially without an addition. That was one of my other questions, I'm glad you said you're already addressing that, like, looking at South's numbers even before, with a bubble class in it, do we really need additional space? Maybe not from a Demo and Trends view. So I'm curious about what that, that looks like for North. Like, is it a four-year problem that would resolve without an addition? Even if I, as someone who wants to see, like, you know, the facilities everywhere. I agree with you, Dr. Johnson, that investment in our buildings, but is that one that will maybe pass through?
I'll, I can get the projections that Demo and Trends has been using. Next year's group is the largest group, so we are welcoming the largest incoming class to the high schools next year. So this year's freshmen and this year's eighth graders are kind of that big bubble group. So we, we do anticipate that it will go down, will it go down to the point where North would kind of be in that comfort zone? I don't know that it would, I don't think it would be at 98%, but I don't know if it will be at 85%, which is where we like to see it. I think from programmatically, some of the things that we've talked about. I think from programmatically, some of the things that we've talked about at the high school are some of the programs that have grown recently simply don't have space within high school either. So as an example, family and consumer ed, like they are really, those classrooms are programmed all seven hours and more of those courses could be offered if we had a space for those. There are some of those issues that demo and trends has kind of kicked around to programmatically. So that's a long answer. The short answer is yes, next year we'll have the largest number of high schoolers.
That's helpful to, you know, as we go out and we talk to the community about why do we need this? Maybe the idea that some, that the eighth graders are, you know, this bubble class is not something that people think about. But there are going to be people that are going to say, you know, this isn't necessarily indicative of always trend for North. But the idea of expanding our programming, of allowing kids to pursue their career readiness, their life readiness in a more effective way, I think is a powerful argument for why we should add on. Even if we do drop back down to, you know, the 88% or something five years from now.
The other kind of cautionary tale with any of the APL projections was that the impact of the pandemic on those numbers. So if you remember last time, I think we waited almost 10 years for another study and the recommendation was let's not wait that long again.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence, did you have more? We were kind of getting at the same. Okay, Dr. Johnson.
So would you be able to, will your team be able to come back after they do their own evaluation by, you know? For me, when you know, slide four, you see South and Memorial, the large amounts of, you know, could I, for me, I'm really interested in kind of how we, what is the best plan to really address those high priorities? And further we put off high priorities, regardless of the spacing issue, the more costly we are in the future. And so as your team works on and, you know, like I said, I'm new to budget and development and, you know, as a school board member, you know, it's really been eye opening for me that agreements could be made and you do half of a roof on a building. You know, I, that's really, that's just an interesting concept. I should try that with my own house and, and then the roofers should see kind of how that goes through. I have enough for just half of this and then two years, you know. But I guess for me, it's really, I would like to see as your team go, I assume they're going to go building by building, but any way they could deepen the comparing capacity of, are there shared child priority wants amongst the buildings? And so that information for me in terms of kind of, you know, the size of projections, it's really trying to address those because, you know, when I heard about the South was on the one before and then 10 years later, here it is still not being, being adapted. That's, I think that's just kind of problematic, but also gives us some, you know, some talking points to kind of share, share with the community. So, but I hear that's kind of what your team's doing now, going back and just kind of going building by building to see, okay.
Yeah, they are. In fact, they are almost done with the four schools that we talked about tonight because it's overwhelming, just like you know, looking through that big report. And so they started with those four buildings because those had recommendations coming forward. And so next I said, okay, let's kind of keep going through. And I have three building service managers that all, you know, cover different buildings. So I know, I'm not sure what the pecking order is next for them, but that's the plan is to go through all of that 500-page report and then start identifying, you know, the things that are the regular maintenance that we just do every year and what are the things that are more of a five-year capital plan? And then really focusing in on those, what's really urgent in the next year and what's urgent in the next five years. Because I know that there is some educational components that would be really nice if we could do that as well. Small breakout rooms and small group instruction, we've talked a lot about that. You'll see that repetitively throughout that study. That's a, that's a very good opportunity for staff, for small groups and target time. And so I know that buildings that were remodeled in 2011, I know many of them have that already and have talked about the value that that's been able to provide. So very common that you would see that in the study because that was something that has become a trend in educational facilities for sure.
Mr. Lawrence? Just one quick thought, and I appreciate the first slide that you put out there about master planning. And as I'm thinking and I'm looking at this, architects did this about three, four months ago?
The master plan?
Yes, the pricing.
They just, we got it at the end of December, so two months.
Two months.
Yeah.
These are wonderful documents, but even as we're looking at them, these numbers, as big as they are, will only get bigger and only more expensive. And with inflationary pressures that are bearing down, which we're seeing right now, that will translate to these numbers as well. And the longer that this is put off, the more expensive it's going to get for the district. And I think it's one of the reasons why referendum is incredibly important in this particular year.
Everybody welcome? So as someone who is going to be helping out with the climate committee, I know that reducing energy usage will be a larger focus for the district with the climate commitment. Is this the place to start to ask for numbers for the effect of these projects on reducing energy usage and cost within the district?
So I think that as we continue the conversation, things, you know, when we make a decision to go to referendum and what projects are going to be included, that would be part of the language that we would put into the requests for proposals for bids on the project would be, you know, what types of products are going to help to go for our goal of being, you know, reduce carbon footprint by 2050? And so that's one of the things that we talked about last week as well with architects and engineers because the scale is huge and with that scale is also a huge price tag. And so really what is our focus? And so as we're putting those projects out and making decisions, that would be part that's included. So that way then we can see, you know, give us a bid for these specific things that help us reduce our carbon footprint. And then, you know, what are the options? Because I think even the options today will be different than the options are five years from now as that process evolves. But we did talk about, you know, if we're doing, we don't have really any roofs on the project because we did a lot of roof projects with the 2016 referendum. But if we were going to be expanding, how can we use solar? You know, and what would that look like to incorporate solar into the plan? And so that was part of the conversation we had. But right now, like, I'm not sure that solar numbers were included in any of that and how would that save future budget dollars?
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So let's see, any other comments and questions? I do want to touch on Abby, the work, you know, you said we need to have some work session time. And obviously that's important, you know, I've been looking ahead at, you know, what is potentially the next year's, you know, work calendar look like? And especially as we come to the completion of our monitoring cycle finishing up. That does open up a fair amount of, you know, regular board meeting time that could be devoted to work sessions. And I know we've talked about, you know, communication plan as well and integrating referendum work with how do we communicate about it? What is the timeline that you're asking for for some of the specific things that you've talked about tonight? I mean, so our schedule begins to open up, you know, by my reckoning, this is something the board has to like, you know, put together and approve its own work calendar for the next year. But, you know, really we're looking at, you know, May, that the schedule starts to open up when monitoring, like the first draft's clear, especially like allows us to still focus on results, but have, anyway. Wrong story, you know, is that timeline that could we be looking at then, then May and up through the summer to work on that for those work sessions? Or do those have to happen earlier because that becomes a little bit more challenging to find that schedule?
I think it's a little bit of both. Because I think part of it is, you know, on our calendar here, that's why I went back to it. You know, we're looking to do the vendor survey in the month of March and April. And so I think that I would guess that we would want to have some discussions about that and what is the goal? What do we want to gain? What do we want to ask the community? So I think that would be critical to have that information. Because otherwise, we're doing a survey with the community and not necessarily having, you know, narrow down that list or targeting a certain dollar amount. I think there obviously would need to be more, certainly as your calendar opens up. But I would think that you would need to have some before then, just to help that piece. Because we want to make sure also that we're gathering the information that will be helpful to the board to help make those, you know, next decisions in that process.
Thank you. Terry, if you can make a note that we can touch on that tomorrow, at least that agenda setting and see where we go from there, just with that information. Thank you, Abby. I appreciate all the information and of course, this is critical for our going forward with this referendum. That leads us to our board debrief for the evening. Mr. Lawrence, you were the third member on settings, so I will turn it to you to lead us through our self-reflection.
Sure. I guess we'll just start tonight what we thought was successful. And I think, you know, I think one of the things that we had talked about, one point, I don't remember what it was anymore. Maybe it was during our own monitoring of our own policies. Our self-evaluation, board self-evaluation, that's when we did it. But just, you know, how we govern and not looking at those board governance policies, and I think it's so interesting one for me, so. Mr. Lawrence?
Pretend to Johnson, I really appreciated the personal development and growth of the presentation. You know, I think the pandemic, as you referenced, has really had an impact on being able to to analyze that within students. As a member of the community that has a son in the district myself, it's nice to have attended on Sunday, I'm an athletic co-signing. And it just, it's nice, I think, to give back where the students are getting involved in things and are more free to do that. And I think that the personal growth and development will follow. So I'm very pleased with where you're going in that and look forward to seeing some progress. You know, it's nice, it's the first meeting in a very long time. I haven't worn a mask. It's wonderful. I have to admit, I feel a bit naked. You know, as a fully vaccinated person, COVID did go through my family for whatever reason. I dodged the bullet on it and I'm lucky. But it is nice to have hopefully this behind us. So I feel like that one, well, I think that's both, both one, one. I don't think any, yeah.
Okay.
I have two positive.
Dr. Johnson?
Well, you know, besides the, you mean of all the excitement that happened in 2007 and without a mask. My point for me. I think the area that we need to work on, I finally caught myself, Dr. B., that said it was so challenging. So I think we would probably have to work on our GC2, GC2, 3. Performance commit itself to continuous improvement. And I think we'll, we'll adapt that plan, I think, a little bit with the reusing of the results piece. And so I think that's, you know, something that will provide us an opportunity in our future work session that initially talk ourselves, talk ourselves through. So, yeah, but overall, yeah, you know, and I apologize for not getting excited about the financial audit in my, 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 kind of excitement about them, certain issues or something.
So I think the, I think we did well tonight was working on our process. It's edifying to see colleagues on the board and myself, I think, continuing to grow in our ability to use our own policies, to talk about those policies and to focus those policies on the things that are important, which is the results for our students. We talked a little bit tonight about investing in our students. And I think when the board develops and works through its own processes and as we manage to know what's in our policies and how to, and where to find it, that is a positive thing. You know, I was on the losing side of a vote tonight, but the overall process was followed and we worked on it the way that the board was intended to. And I think that is the positive thing. And I think the growth aspect then that we need to do is to make sure that we do these things responsibly and consider as we grow in our ability to use our own policies to impact the district that our students. Just keep in mind how we want to do that and to make sure that we focus on that and grow in that.
The light of for me was that I am where we discussed changing our policy without having made face, notice or deliberation. I think what it came down to me was whether it was like a, purely by our desire to have a one-word change to be noticed, delayed, et cetera, for two weeks versus something that we are empowered to do now. Pragmatic, I guess, in terms of how we approach that. That's why I voted the way that I did is I felt like it was just, if it was in our government's model and it was a pragmatic thing to do, even if it's something we want to do sparingly. And I thought that conversation went well because it had not been a rude way crossed when we were identified something like that. And I suspect that it will come up again. There'll be other things that we find perhaps that we, that we're going to have to talk about whether we want to schedule it for the next meeting or if it's something we're, you know, empowered to tackle at the time, so. But based upon how that conversation went tonight, I have confidence that we'll navigate it well.
This one, this made me felt like a little bit, we could see the light at the end of the tunnel and we would be done with all the foundational work. And although we didn't have a focus on results, yeah, I could see us getting to the point where we're, you know, the model's like fully in action. So I enjoyed that.
So for me, I think, you know, I always enjoy, I think the results policies are the thing that excite me the most about being on the board. I think it's, I think this is where we really see, like, this is where all that other stuff shakes out into how are we as a board impacting the lives of young people, which is why we're here? You know, and I think that when we talk about these things and when we discuss how important they are and we learn from directors in the room and we talk about it amongst ourselves, I think it's really edifying in this role to do that work. And I've enjoyed it every time. I think the part for me that is, when Abby said we need board work sessions, I literally felt my stomach good. So I, because we've been tweeting. So, yes, but, you know, I think that I continue to, I continue to roll around this committee structure, the lack of committee structure within the board governance, you know, structure as it is, I know, I know. But the, but the, you know, just the amount of work that's needed and we're doing it together. And I, I said this at our last work session to Lori, is that I do think that there's something to be said for how we have all now the shared knowledge and I appreciate that. It is a lot, it is a lot more work than just two board meetings a month, you know what I mean? And it's proving that right now and it's been proving that for a while. So, you know, I continue to be like, would this be better if I'm in the committee? Would this be better if I was a committee? But I'm just thinking about it, that's all.
The end.
Thank you, Commissioner Zer. All right, this time I would hear emotional jerk. All right. This time I would hear motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Verband?
This program was brought to you by cooperation between New Works and the Oakley Area School Board.